Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. And the first thing we're gonna do is nominate a moderator.
I nominate Smithy.
I'll say it again.
I, uh, I'd like to, uh, I wanna ask a question before I sit. Do I have the right to bring up stuff if I'm the moderator? Like the question and answering down here for the townspeople? Uh, I gonna have to keep my mouth shut where I want, if I wanna gripe, can I do that being a moderator? I think I'm gonna settle right now, I'm respectfully gonna decline because I am not a very happy township man. So I reject that.
I nominate Mark Weaver.
I'll say it again.
I don't think I have it.
Yeah, that'd been all right too.
You can say it. We need to vote anymore?
Oh, okay.
I'll ask three more times. I'll ask three more times, do you need more nominations?
Oh, any more nominations? Any more nominations? Any more than anyone?
Did you swear again?
Alright, come on up, Mark Weaver.
I was gonna say that.
I like your butt, now. Get out of here. Eat your mushrooms when you go.
I'll get a couple after breakfast. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and personally discharge to the duties of moderator of this township meeting to the best of my ability. So that may go, Mark Weaver.
Give me my tuition check.
Yeah. Okay, the meeting was called to order by Township Clerk Kaylee Ferris. Motion to nominate Jane Maxie as moderator was made by Dan Smith and seconded by Don Mayfield. Jane Maxie was elected moderator. Jane Maxie took the oath of office that was administered by Clerk Kaylee Ferris. A motion to accept the 2017 Annual Township Meeting Dinner was made by Don Mayfield and seconded by Jim Stadler. The 2019 and 19 Annual Financial Statement for the Road and Bridge in Town were available for any of the electors to review. Any questions for the township people? The meeting was adjourned at 6:25 PM.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from last meeting and second it.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Does everybody accept the minutes of the previous meeting? Just by raising of your hands on paper. All is agreed? No?
Now, might get two lawsuits, just tell me.
Somebody's not pleading. Might be a stray, but somebody can do it. Alright, are there any questions? Anybody wants to bring up?
Uh, don't you gotta read all of them?
Yeah, we find answers.
We gotta read all of them, dude. All in? Gee, I'm done with that before I read it.
You can, you can, uh...
You can have Kaylee read it for you.
Or you could ask if everybody in the audience, you know, that there's any questions about it, that you could just bypass it, you know? Accept it.
We can ask Kaylee to do it.
Well, you can ask Kaylee to, yeah. Do we have our copies of the budgets or the numbers?
Uh, yeah, they're floating around.
They're floating around, but we didn't make, just made a couple.
Not fair enough of them.
Somebody can read mine while we're giving back.
I'd love to if I could.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with general town fund. The balance as of 4/1/2018 was $101,187.69.
You watch. Just expenses and then, or the rest of total revenue received and expenses and then any.
Okay, so total revenues was $54,251.32. And expenditures were, for Altman line shoring, $3,315.50. And total expenditures was $15,172.80. Compensation was $38,747.84 with a balance of, as of 3/31/2019, of $108,901.76. Cemetery fund, balance of, as of 4/1/2018, was $48,804.31. Total expenditures was $7,200 and total compensation was $200. Balance as of 3/31/2019 is $53,627.29. General assistance fund, balance of, as of 4/1/2019, was $63,211.53. Total revenues, $8,069.1. Total expenditure, $797.28. Balance as of 3/31/19 is $70,483.26. Road and bridge fund, balance as of 4/1/2018 was $40,507.62. Total revenues, $93,511.63. Total expenditures, $46,673.19. Total compensation, $44,368.46 with a balance of $42,977.60. Permanent roads fund, balance of, as of 4/1/2018, was $24,602.50. Total expenditures was $14,479.93 with a balance of $24,406.79. Building and equipment, balance as of 4/1/2018, was $9,216.80. Total revenues, $15,173.39. Total expenditures, $15,525.80. And balance as of 3/31/19, $8,865.11. And county bridge matching, balance as of 4/1/18, was $12,253.11. Total expenditures, $635 which is a balance of $16,670.87. And be very welcome for anybody that's seen.
You might tell him what the two CDs, uh, dollars on the two CDs.
The two CDs, um, current balance, $35,691.1 and... Anybody have questions?
I understand that we, our tractor is broke and we got it fixed. Now, what I'd like to know is, the totals that you've read as well, in excess of $250,000 and we cannot get the tractor paid for? What's up with this? I mean, are we just a savings company or are we actually functioning to get something done? Are we, uh, we in the discussion on this right now, if we are?
There's enough money in there to pay for the tractor.
Well, are we gonna get transferred or something? All we gotta do, somebody's gotta make a motion and second it, we can take it out of town fund and pay for it. I make a motion, we transfer enough money to pay for the tractor.
T O I says you can't.
This is, well, what, what are we having this meeting for? What's, what's this meeting for then? If somebody out here wants to get something done? Now, wait a minute, now, wait a minute. I mean, really, we're here, we're taxpayers. Taxpayers is the boss. We have a meeting once a year to voice our opinion. And you tell them now we can't do nothing?
It can be done, but first of all, it has to be on the agenda and second of all...
It wasn't on the agenda?
It has to be.
Okay, then I'm calling them. This meeting is illegal, so it wasn't posted two weeks before this meeting was held. Should've been in the paper two weeks, it was in there one week. So as far as I'm concerned, we're wasting our time being here. Will you guys take it and do what you want? But, I'll just wait till we get going. Alright, go ahead.
So how do we get it on the agenda? It's gotta be on the agenda to be...
Forty-eight hours ahead of time and I told Kaylee Sunday night that I wanted it off.
Now, here, I'll, I got it right here in the book.
Okay.
If you want, I mean, if you wanna read it, or I'll show you.
Just read it, tell me. I've got it over here at this truck too. It says forty-eight hours on the agenda, right? That's what you said. It can be done. What you're telling me is we're wasting our time. You're saying we can't vote on nothing, we can't bring nothing up, we can't get nothing done.
If there is an English language newspaper published in the township, at least one publication in that newspaper before the meeting is all says it got to have.
I heard it was two.
Alright, that, you can read it, I read it right in the book.
Okay, we got a meeting now.
Okay, now?
Forty-eight hours. I had, I told Kaylee Sunday night, her husband was there, but I wanted it on the, on the agenda.
We never talked about the tractor.
Yes, we did. I brought it up, I said, I heard Lee had a nine thousand...
You asked me about the bill, but you never said to put it on the agenda.
Okay, that's just one thing. Okay, that got beat on that. Okay, how do we do this?
How do we get it on the agenda?
How, how do we go about getting it on?
There are two ways to get it on the agenda. The first way is fifteen citizens of the township have to by March 1st submit a request to the clerk. And that is the first way. The second way is the board of trustees at their meeting before the annual town meeting, where they approve the agenda, have to assign it to be on the agenda that way.
I gotta say because...
You, you had a board meeting in...
Well, not...
No, April. You had...
Yeah, but that's... Had to be done in March.
Or that's where I mean, March. You had one in March.
Yeah.
That's where you would've approved the agenda to, and put everything on it.
I wanna ask a question. The town fund is not for paying for the equipment repairs. Why are you wanting to pay for equipment repairs out of town?
Well, here, here, you can read this right here. Is it the township's duty to maintain roads? The bottom one right there, number three, you read that? Can you read? Tractor, we gotta have to maintain roads. He hasn't got the money in his account, so what do we do?
Why don't he have the money in his account?
I, that's not the point.
That is exactly why isn't everybody hearing it?
Because who is, who is gonna know the tractor's gonna break down?
You're supposed to have hope for that.
Not $10,000, you're gonna put that in the budget? Oh, my tractor's gonna break down next week? I wanna put $10,000 of my budget to cover that?
Well, we have an oil chip in three years. They got money for the tractor.
Now, we ain't talking about an oil chip. We're talking about a tractor. Now, if you got something to say about that, bring it up when it, when it's...
Well, sure, undoubtedly, there's enough money there to pay for the tractor.
Sure, we got enough money in the township, all they gonna do is...
Prior planning prevents piss poor performance.
What?
Prior planning prevents piss poor performance.
Hey, Lee Waller was elected by the township. He was elected by the community. Now, if you got a problem with that, run somebody against him.
I just said, prior planning.
It says, I've been to the state's attorney, and it, Lee Waller, well, Lee Waller has got elected and he can come, he can, he don't even have to show up down here.
I told you, T O I, I told the...
I made you hear what T O I said.
We can yell all you want.
I won't hate, I can yell, I can yell as loud as you can.
You get my face one more time.
I didn't get your face, I got close to it again. You didn't even see it.
Now, shut up, she's crying.
Here's the monitor right there.
Both of you, sit down.
Both of you, sit down.
Oh, shit.
There ain't no need to get involved about me. You can't do that, he's the moderator.
You can't do it.
I know, I can't do that, but the moderator...
Both of you, need to calm down. If you got something to say, say it in a normal tone of voice. If you can't say it in a normal tone of voice, we'll ask you to leave.
No problem.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
No problem. Okay, let's continue on.
Well, it's pretty hard to know that you're gonna have a $10,000 air bill on your payroll now. I don't give a what it is. You can buy something brand new.
Yeah, it's gonna blow up.
And it could. So, uh, it's gotta be paid for.
Exactly.
And he don't have the money in the account, so we need to pay for it. Cause we gotta have it.
We have, what was wrong with the tractor? Have the money in a different account that the road commissioner is in charge of. That the road commissioner is in charge of, that we could pay for it out of that account. Road and bridge or something like that. Cause all of that, under my understanding, is in control of by the road commissioner. So there's refunds available in them accounts that cover the repairs for the tractor.
When will he have money in his accounts to pay for it?
When our taxes come in.
August.
August? August. Then, whenever first installment of taxes is collected, it's paid in the...
What was wrong with the tractor? So we're out of money until then? Lee, you gotta, uh, tell some of them, they wanna know what's the matter with the tractor, tell them a little bit about it.
Okay, basically, what we done, we took it out for inspection, okay? They did an inspection. They found a final drive bearing out, which, they had to disassemble the whole back end to find the drive. This is an inside bearing. While it was in there, the brakes was breaking, or, they were parading, so we haven't put new brakes in. They had a water pump on it to fix the seat up. Uh, they fixed a leak on the oil cooler. They put a new filter out. I can't think of all of that, though, I'm just kinda going off my head.
You might also mention tractor's got nine thousand...
It's got eight thousand hours on it.
Eight thousand hours on it?
For normal wear and tear, but you can't see coming down the road.
It's on the road a lot.
Say it real fast, but...
I, I do have a question, I guess, you know, finally, if we, you know, took it in for inspection and it was gonna be that much? I mean, you know, do you think Danny Reeder could've done this a whole lot cheaper?
He probably did. And also, they put...
You know, I'm just asking, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm here to find the results. You know, I mean, you know, Danny's a, is a voting, you know, person right here in the township and I, you know, we could probably...
He does nothing else.
He doesn't, but he's, he's still, he's still within the...
He's a taxpayer.
He's a taxpayer.
He is, and... You know, within the, you know, and I'm guessing it's thirty-five, forty bucks an hour versus...
When I asked him how much it was gonna run, they didn't give me that quote until it was done. I mean, we put new steering knobs on it too, which the parts was nothing. Uh, they had fifty-three hours of paper on it.
That's where they get you.
So now the worst, we can't, we won't have any money to pay that bill till August, is that it?
We do have enough money, we're just gonna have to move it around a little bit, but...
I'd say labor, they take even a hundred dollars an hour, you don't have to pay for that.
How much money is in the fund, it's a span period.
Casey. John Deere.
Ten thousand in the highway.
That's the balance...
It's gonna be fixed, you drive real bad, there's...
Some of those are...
Yeah, some of that is protected funds, social security.
Is there anything else that can be...
Building and equipment, there's money in that to be used.
Yeah, you actually, from last year to this, you actually gave about $2,000, almost $3,000, you got more than others, so I'm like, can't move their money around and take it out of their...
Has John Deere, have you, Lee, have you talked to John Deere? Were they offered, have they, will they help work with us on it, or is it gotta be paid immediately, or?
I think we can wait a little bit, but I'd try to...
Or pay a little bit, pay a little bit now and pay a little bit? They pay for the parts now and pay for the rest of it when they get our tax money.
Yeah, I'd like to see them knock some of that labor off, cause fifty-three hours to pull a final drive off and a few other trinkets, I think is way out of line, but, uh, I don't think you can do things like that. Initial cost on it, he said it wouldn't be a whole wash, just a bearing and stuff like that. Well, I didn't know that, I might sell over when I got that bitch in there.
What fund does that belong to?
Road and bridge.
Road and bridge, you have, I think what she's saying is forty thousand.
There's forty-two thousand in there.
Yeah.
It's forty-three.
Well, it should be, it's probably in the middle.
Yeah. Is that the paper?
Some of it, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but that's the pay social security for the...
Okay, is there pay coming out of that fund too?
Yes. Labor, labor comes out at that point. But sorry, back pay, but as you can see, the breakdown on it.
Yeah. I've gotta say to Lee, if you took that out of the highway department fund, if you have forty-two thousand in, pay for repairs of the tractor.
And that's basically road and bridge. The only thing, if we get our new budget in, I did put it in the new budget to pay for it, so, I mean, we can do it that way. We can't maintain off the old budget, which is actually over anyway, so we'll have to pay it out of the new budget.
Well, what I'm saying is, we have the funds in there, can you pay the bill out of less fund? And then when we pass our new budget, take the money for the repairs and put it back in the, this fund for the road and bridge funds. Otherwise, you're gonna be paying interest on a bill that's not paid. That's never changed.
I, I don't know, I think John Deere worked with him on paying the bills, so I mean, it's... Your, your, your bill's gotta be paid sometime.
It's gotta be paid.
It's April, May, beginning of July, fucking four months.
So what do you wanna do, Lee? You want to, uh, go without water, move some money? What do you wanna do?
I probably... The months I get the bill, it's...
Well, I do two within a reasonable amount of time. It may not have to be done the next week, but it needs to be paid for in the next four weeks.
Before they start charging interest and...
They don't need to mind on top, they just... No need to pay interest on the money.
No, we yell it.
The tractor knows that.
Yell it, so... They, they may let us slide to the next month, but we need to do something.
And you've got two other guys in there with you. Rusty Bond, I don't want other, you know, guys in there. I've got two over there right now, so... Can we make a motion on that to move that?
Well, we don't have to, it's just coming down a road and bridge.
Yeah. If, if he got the pickle.
If, if, if the, this is something that the board has to discuss tomorrow night. If the board could loan him the money at no interest, pay it, and then when he gets his tax money, pay us back. If that would, that would help solve, resolve this problem.
We need to do something like that because if he don't, then if he has something else come along, he's still gonna be short.
Of course, they don't wanna run him down to nothing.
I don't want him to have the interest on it.
Right.
Right, no reason.
Yeah, cause that's just money that's gone for no good reason. Right. And I believe we can loan it at no interest, I don't, so if we have to charge interest, I'll have to check into that, but I think we've done it in the past, we loaned him money.
Now, do we need some, can... Moving stuff around like this, should we have some kind of contract between each other saying, hey, when you get your tax money, ten thousand goes back in to the road and bridge? Or back into the town fund?
If the motion made, any remnants on the...
Put it in the budget.
Put it in the budget, okay.
Yeah, cause both the township and the road commissioner signed the budget.
Hey, you're gonna make the special notes in the minutes that the money was loaned and then to do back.
Tomorrow night, I don't have a bit of problem.
Tax dollars.
One of the money to get the bill back.
And then he can just pay us back, he can get some money, I ain't got a problem with it. I give it forward. That way you didn't cut it. Inch down to nothing.
Aren't all of, aren't all of the board members here this evening?
Yes.
This is not a board meeting, but this is an opportunity for the members of the board, if they think it's a reasonable idea. If they feel so inclined, they can say that they would support such a matter or not.
Yeah, we have, basically.
I support it. As long as it gets paid back.
Yeah. That's what this is, it's communication. We talk about, we had a proposal, now it needs to be put in the form of a motion and it's the board's opportunity tomorrow night to say yes or no. So if we're waiting on the motion, I will make the motion, propose that this be tabled for the next board meeting and at that time, the board will discuss options, including borrowing money from the town fund and repaying it upon receipt of tax receipts.
I'll say that.
Welcome tomorrow evening. His board members will approve that. Just cause it's on the agenda, the meeting's gonna be approved.
That's their opportunity, this is, that's how this works.
Well, that's why, that's why people are here tonight.
Well, we've all, we've all said, we've all agreed.
I'm gonna lose all board members right now.
We've, we've all agreed to that.
The board members are there.
It's been a long time. She's been working, yeah, she's been working on her work.
Yeah.
I don't recall any issue. You may, you may have, I don't recall a question off my...
Okay, so...
Because we specified, specified in the minutes.
What's the next? That's the agenda.
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to have the supervisor remove the camera up here in this voting room and this meeting room. And I'd like to have the camera removed from the workstation outside here. And I also like to have the camera turned away, cause we're gonna get a lawsuit from our neighbor over here, cause he likes to go outside and chase his wife around a tree or whatever, but he doesn't want it on camera. And right now, it's on his house, his backyard, you can't do nothing without being on camera. I don't think that's right. I think that's... I don't think that's right. I think, I'd like to make a motion for them three things to be done, because this is not right, to have this in, these cameras inside it.
Cameras in the voting part, I don't think.
I talked, I talked to the state board of elections.
You gotta have it turned off then during the election?
It can be recording as long as it is not pointing in a booth and somebody goes in there, but...
I didn't think it could.
I was gonna say, what happens to privacy and who did it?
This is a public building, there's no privacy here.
Well, I'm the election judge and that's not what they told me. They had like to turn it off.
There are locker room, it can be there.
This is a public building place, so it can be, you can have any camera in.
And T, T O I said...
Yes.
Once the cameras are voted on by the board and they're up, they're there.
The hammer in, in that booth, put it over there.
I talked to him until we ever, ever... I talked to until we ever, ever.
You look in your book, who's got the control of that, maybe you do this one, but who's got the control of the rest of the bill?
Well, technically.
It's all town buildings.
It's all town buildings.
And the town.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Who paid for the buildings? Who paid for the buildings? These are town buildings.
Do you know who paid for the building?
These are town buildings.
Who paid for the building?
The town paid for that one right there.
They paid for that one, did they pay for this one?
Yes.
Do you know that for a fact? Prove it to me.
Well, those guys told me the town owns these buildings.
Uh, he might have told you that, but I don't think he really knew.
Yeah. The T O I said, once the cameras are up, they're up.
So they're gonna come down.
Well, it's class four felony.
Okay, go for it.
I, I'm just telling you, if you damage a cable, a camera, any of it, it is class four felony.
I didn't say I was gonna damage it, but it may get covered up.
That's, that could be a class four felony.
Go for it.
If it's covered down.
Okay, you say we got camera in here, camera in the shop. Camera pointing at the other neighbor's property, I would say, definitely probably needs to be turned for his privacy.
I was gonna say that's.
I would think so.
Invasion of privacy.
I mean, I can see having it where it points to the gas tanks, so you could kind of track that, who's using the gas tanks.
Well, then.
That's reasonable, but for the neighbor's property.
Okay, I have, I have a question. Why were the cameras put inside anyway? If you're worried about theft or whatever, outside I can see, why inside the building? When it's just a, and when there's not a meeting or voting going on, there's nobody in here. Why have, why spend the money on a camera in here?
Well, I, I wanted one in here. I'm a supervisor, I do general assistance, and if I'm meeting with a female, and she makes too much money. And I decline, I reject her because she makes too much money.
Right.
You know, and who's to say, saying that's happened, if she walks out this door, gets in her car, and rips her blouse and her pants, and goes to the county sheriff's department and says, Jay Maxi just assaulted me up here at the townhouse. I have no proof, I, you know, it's her word against mine, I guess what I'm trying to say.
Well, have you checked that out?
Could you not have had a body cam and do the same thing, instead of having it?
That would get me ridiculous. And I love, and I love to get some.
Yeah, well, hey, everybody, just one person.
Can I ask a speak? Okay, go ahead.
Over, over three thousand.
That's cheap, that is dirt cheap.
We could have bought him for around four or five hundred.
But what I'm trying to answer.
Yeah, we could have seen that.
On Jay's part. Jay has the right to have me, as a supervisor, he's in charge of the general funds. He has a right to have somebody with him that's on the board, he can have the clerk or trustee, either one of them be here with him when that happens. In the past, we always had two people, now all of a sudden, we got one, we should have another person on general assembly anyway. On a general assistance, they should have two people.
Always do.
Be, to be there, to okay this.
If I may, where are you basing that statement on? The reason I say that, as a former supervisor in this township, in this building, I was never, uh, had an opportunity for another person on the account to sign off on it.
That's not, I didn't say that, I said to be there.
There was never any person except to do that.
Well, Dom Ayo did, he had some.
So I congratulate him on that, but there's.
So you're saying there's not nothing in the rulebook about that?
Not to my knowledge, there wasn't when I was here, too.
Well, then what, then what would be wrong with doing it then, for anything in the rulebook saying?
I think it's perfectly fine, but the point is, the bigger picture is, the question has come up, people are unhappy, uncomfortable with the cameras. As far as a gentleman looking at his private property, I certainly understand that is an issue, and I think that should be rectified. But when it comes to owning township, township property, being in township buildings. I think the security of those items is important.
Yep.
You've gotta have tools secure, you've gotta have files secure in this room, you've gotta have.
So you think it's okay to have a man working in the shop be on camera twenty-four seven?
I don't think there should be a problem there.
It's not any different than like taking a general store, you know, taking care of employees, I mean, it's really not.
That's where you're on the phone.
We got cameras at the hospital.
County highway department has cameras, the county buildings both have cameras, the sheriff's department and the courthouse all have cameras, it's no different.
Yeah, it's no different.
About anywhere you're going. Whether you know it or not, you're on camera.
You probably got news to look around.
Yeah, well, the problem, I, that's true, I don't agree with all the big boys myself, the biggest part of my hand with them is what was paid for.
Well, I'm telling you right now.
Well, good cameras are being.
I guess it's two weeks ago.
Doing everything like.
I, I do a lot of.
The main question, and I know it, for three thousand dollars, you're just getting.
But it's the same issue with the tractor, like.
Especially if you got a big union scare.
Yes, I know, you cannot do it, any cheaper than what you got.
Pay prevailing wage.
Pay prevailing wage.
Right.
Yeah, prevailing wage kept you up another nine hundred dollars, probably.
Yeah, like I said, I was in this field, and I know, and that's dirt cheap, and you going to install it yourself? Yes.
Three games, dirt cheap.
Hell, yes, you're gonna buy a ten thousand dollar system, so you, okay, what you got, you gotta get it priced for it, I can tell you that right now. Cause I was in this field, I was in this electronic field, you just sit there and smirk all you want, doing laugh at me, I know what I'm talking about in this part.
We have that much in barn cameras while I'm in the building.
And I can't blame them one bit for doing it, especially all the shit that's been going on, like south of Casey here or so, just last couple of months, I can understand it.
I thought that money could be a lot better spent.
Like what?
If we didn't own anything for the township.
What's gonna stand out here, watch guard, twenty-four seven? What can you?
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't had anything broken into for like forty years.
Don't mean anything, that guy's house.
Well, I guess it does, it means that we haven't had anything broke into for thirty or forty years.
That don't mean anything anymore.
No.
All this crap's gone on, made people wrecking in stuff.
Cause they're coming out to the country now.
Yes, they are.
And they're going to people's houses, broad daylight.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, broad daylight.
I don't care, thirty, forty years ago, I know we haven't had this stuff around here, but. Is it getting closer?
Checked on the insurance.
Yeah, but they don't affect the insurance rate.
Okay.
My mother here goes, what, your brother got broke into? Seven, eight?
Oh, my neighbor, just after we voted to put these in, my neighbor, uh, Mike Wilson got broke into.
Out of the country? Yeah, that's okay, and they're coming out of the country.
Yep.
Not only in cities, they're coming out of the country.
You might not think this little county's safe, but it's not anymore.
No. It's not.
But it's not any different than like you wanting to pay for the tractor out of the town, because we need it. This is a benefit for the town, so technically, the three thousand dollars, like, yeah, it's a large sum of money, but it's gonna benefit the town. If we did get broken into, or.
I, the cameras are already paid for, we've had them installed, I really don't see a benefit to taking them out.
Where's the monitors for them?
There's no, we don't have a monitor, it's the hard ground right there behind you, locked in the box.
Okay, how, how long did it last?
It's been thirty days.
And three sets?
That's what this record's going to.
Back over one?
There's no tape, it's just a hard ground.
You can't, like, you can't, something, like, system, like, you can have it where you can look at on your tablet.
Yeah, none of this is something that happens, there ain't no.
It just records it and then, oh, in that thirty days, it's wearing.
Okay, how many times has it been opened up and you, since it's been installed?
There's only two people that's got a key, and that's him and Lee, Jay and me.
Okay.
And I haven't looked at it yet.
And they don't have a monitor to look at, so.
There's really no need to look into it.
We don't have a problem.
If you have a problem, there's no need to bother worrying about it.
Have something they broke into?
Yeah.
I definitely feel that the neighbor's property camera.
Yeah, that needs to be relocated.
Maybe it just needs to be turned a little bit, but it needs to be.
Turned a little.
That's all I ask for there, I mean, I think it's great to have the camera on the fuel tanks, on the outside door. I just don't see the reason for the inside, but I guess I might have loaded on that.
Reason for the inside and the shops, unless they've been having tools come up missing, and if they have them, I don't really know why, that would have been a serious issue.
But I've gone to buyer times, not anybody around, but I know doors have been up, what's keeping from somebody to come in and get something?
I go and let open them up all the time.
So hey, I'm saying that once again, you know, you think this county is, you know.
Your strength works, how they know it's on the neighbor's property.
Right.
If the doors are open, you got the cameras there, hung there.
That's a good question.
And if you got a camera up there to watch it, so.
Fred.
I can.
View all the entrance points.
He would not want to take my answers.
Why can't we?
Fred's got one.
He's got a good question.
If nobody's looked at the, the videos, how's that camera on the neighbor's property, how do you, how do you prove it?
I don't know.
If nobody's looked at it, it's just hearsay, good question.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not.
Well, have you looked at it?
Yes, yes.
Have you looked at it? Okay, it shows you the property? There you go.
Okay, but Lee Waller answered your question, he has looked.
He has looked at it.
When they first cut it up, me and Jay both looked at it, and it is pointed towards the neighbor's. The problem I have, I think the one in the shop should be moved into the front doors of this building, cause you have no protection on your front door.
And another thing too, what's wrong, if we didn't leave it in the shop, what's wrong with, when they come to work in the morning, they shut it off?
Why?
When they get ready to leave, they'll shut it back off.
Well, as post people. Post people.
Why do you have to shut it off?
Yeah.
Would you like to work on your job and be watched?
He does. I do, I do, every day, every day, every day.
I got four cameras in my shop. Why, why is, it just baffles my mind, why everybody's so concerned about protecting our fuel, but we don't wanna protect all these thousands of dollars worth of tools out there?
Yeah, yeah.
You got the whole square door, you can walk right in that door, back to pickup.
Okay, but, okay, but when you get your shop, you'll see them. That camera, I'll catch you. Why not, we gotta scamper the shop.
Turn the light off in there, that's not a night vision camera.
Well, let's spend a little more money and get a night vision camera then.
Well, your bill's a ballpark too, for the kids to play, swing sets, Kinder Toppers, this bill, this bill is somebody's bar.
I don't know what.
Let's buy a fire truck, that way we get the, we'll harass some people, we got our own fire protection, we got plenty of money. If you wanna spend this money here, you wanna spend this money, let's use it, you know what we ought to do, we ought to fill everybody's bowl. Once a year, we can do that, we got money, man, but they just throw away, hell, shit, throw away.
It's a, it's a, I don't care about the shop.
Nobody's done it for three years.
I'm not talking the same, they're spending money, they're just.
We're getting clear calls, a lot of meetings, actually. We need to get back to the agenda.
Everybody else had a job history on video every other day, every day.
I don't understand this, I don't.
We're spending money, what?
I mean, the cameras are there. When I went to the Eastern, I had cameras there. You can hardly do nothing without being on camera.
You go to Walmart, you go to, tell me, Mark, would you go in?
If these guys aren't viewing the cameras of the guys working. They shouldn't need to even open that unless something comes up missing, or there's a shortage of fuel, or it's broken into. It shouldn't be for recreational view, proceed, oh, well, Bill was here working, but he sat in there for an hour and a half, and that shouldn't be for that purpose.
Well, how's that recreational?
It's not.
Well, I don't call that recreational.
He shouldn't be having, almost say, a lot of Lee's employees are doing out there. I mean, if they sat there, take a break.
No, but that's spending the money, isn't it?
That's right, they're, they're dudes, they're taking a break, a lot of times when they're out in the room, they don't take their break when they're outside.
Well, which is why I think we need to have a time clock, or something they can write.
Oh, we have a time clock, I never even had a time clock at Eastern, we had twenty-something Eastern clock. When you come in, you're up the timer.
They didn't know you were there or not?
No, we have time clocks at the hospital, we have the clock, in and out for lunch, too.
So they knew that you were there, or every day?
You get docked if you're.
It was.
They didn't know you were at work, were or weren't?
Boss knew who was there, all he did, did was go through and check the time card.
So you have a time card.
He got one.
Yeah, it was time sheet, he had a time clock, you did, you're on there today.
Okay, well, we have a time sheet.
Yeah, but I was in charge of writing down its own hours, what, Bill's job, they'll receive, while I was doing them during the hours.
Well, I'm just saying, we're so worried about the money being spent, and that would be spent foolishly, to pay people that aren't working.
I don't think, you don't find teenagers that are sitting in there not doing nothing.
I mean, if you look at the back page of this, how much?
I, I already looked at that.
Income, how much we spend on paying employees?
For employees. Okay, it's something you gotta have, and the pay rate for what they're guys are receiving, isn't a whole lot great, I can guarantee you that. I mean, yeah, it's a little bit above minimum wage, you ain't gonna survive on that rate. I mean, the highest paid one on there is eleven dollars an hour. I know people at Walmart make a lot more than that.
I'm thinking, why are we paying them if they're just sitting around?
I doubt if you find them sitting around in that shop or else, when I've ever stopped to be here to talk to Lee, I've never seen a guy just sitting there like that.
Are you accused of sitting around and doing nothing?
Nope.
So why is it, why is that parked right up there?
So why do they think they're stealing tools, tools from there?
No, I said they were stealing tools.
That's the whole idea, having the camera in there, cause if tools come up missing, and the place is broken into, these cameras on the outside of the.
Will take care of that.
Should take care of who is going in and out of there, it's tools.
Yeah, but you don't know, somebody come in, but they might not take anything.
That's true.
But you don't know, but if they, but if you don't see them taking, they can come out, take something, and you don't hit it, you're gonna be seen where they're taking it, so how would you know?
If they carry it out the door, they're gonna be seen carrying it out.
Well, I'm thinking it's how big a tool they're gonna be carrying out.
Well, they're gonna be carrying one inch out of the time, out of their hand pocket?
They can carry.
She's done kind like that, Lee.
That was in there, buddy.
But, no, you need in there, so you want to, you take it, that way you got an idea, and you get a better picture of who the person actually is, with the outside cameras.
That's, that's up to the board, I mean, they're already in session. I don't know if they want to wear that. I know if I actually work here, if he's in the shop all day long, which these guys aren't, that'd be a pain.
Why, you just said you worked at Eastern with cameras all over you.
I was, you could hardly be out anywhere on that campus and not be on camera.
And it's like that everywhere, Mark, so what, why is this shop?
It's probably worse, it's not that way where Johnny works. I don't think it's that way with Kenny works, that's up to the place where they're working in. You guys believe you need the cameras, the board voted on it and passed it, what more do you need?
Exactly.
So. Board approved it, had to approve it for.
Well, it was approved when it falls precincts. I go to Jesport because two people over there on the bench said they was not gonna put the cameras on the inside. The following month, I was in Florida, I wasn't here to stop the minutes, to raise hell about it, I found out about it when I got back from Florida. So as far as I'm concerned is, I was lied to, and I'm not happy about it.
I don't think that was about that.
I, I heard from the very beginning, before these even went in, they were talking about putting cameras inside before he proposed that one.
I, before I voted on it, before I said yes, Jay Maxi and Mike Brannenburn says it was not gonna be in the building. Now, Jim Stanbury was there to hear it, he's on the board of directors, and Lee Waller is the road commissioner, and he was here to hear it too. Now, I can't do anything about it because they passed the minutes, but I'm saying, I voted for it, don't say we're all in favor of it, two of us was not.
But you voted for it at the time.
Huh?
But you voted for it.
I voted for.
Keep Jay from voting.
Yeah.
Basically. Jay said we was putting camera there, there, one here, then one in there.
No, he said I would. That's why I would have voted for it.
In the minutes, we agreed on four cameras, which everyone knew were there.
On the outside, not inside.
No, we don't need four.
Well, then somebody changed the minutes, I mean, because I did not vote for that.
Well, at first, you sustained from voting.
Right.
And then you said, wait a minute, now, if I don't.
I just wanna ask a question.
Now, you said, now, if I don't vote, will it pass, and Stan's very looked at you and said, yes, it'll pass, because Jay will probably vote for it, well, then.
Then I asked, then I asked Jay, then I asked Jay, if you're gonna put them on the inside, I won't vote yes, but I said that you, you know, but if you're gonna keep them on the outside. But I said that you, you know, but if you want to keep them on the outside...
I don't remember that. I took minutes.
Well, and he remembers it, and Lee remembers it. Now, we got...
Also, they...
Well, that's because they don't want the cameras.
Yeah.
Well, I can't see that. That's what you do. Also, well, that was a real challenge. We've been hearing a lot of that now.
That's true.
It also passed around that those minutes were modified, but I think because they were twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred. I remember that going on.
Yeah, and then when we got it, it was thirty something.
No, I've got the minutes. I did not weigh them, but the previous minutes before that, I don't remember the exact amount was higher than what we actually paid.
Fifty-four hundred dollars, and I thought that was, we, we had, we were...
No, you didn't think that was high. I thought it was high.
We had a motion on the table to prove...
If I had said anything, that fifty-four hundred dollar one would have passed that night, just like that.
We had a motion on the table to pass that for them cameras. And I said, hold on a minute, do you want to take, table this till next month and try to get another bid or two?
I was the one that said, I think Mr. Bearview said, hey, you maybe ought to get a second bid because...
He's even probably got them on record. Yeah, he's got them on video, probably. So...
Thanks for the camera.
You never give anything on one bid. I always see.
Then the next month, you brought a bid of two thousand some dollars.
It was thirty-five, it was from all...
It was thirty-five hundred. I'm not mixed.
Last month's bid is thirty-five.
I have it in the minutes. I could have brought the minutes. Actually, I'll go get the minutes right now.
She did, right. She changed the minutes.
I was here.
You weren't paying any attention to what was here.
Jim Stambury said, excuse me, two thousand.
As I said, it's saving this twenty-two hundred dollars.
No, no.
Here's a way around that. Get a digital voice recorder, record every meeting verbatim, and save them on a SD drive. And then if there's a question about it, you go back to the verbatim.
The last meeting said, you did three thousand.
I'll read up to you.
It was not two thousand.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
We saved two thousand dollars from the previous month.
No. You didn't have a monitor on there, and you went and got a monitor and then changed the minutes.
I did not. I didn't have a monitor.
Why would we change the minutes?
Well, if you didn't have a monitor, how do you know the guys were sitting?
I didn't, I've never looked at that thing. We don't have a monitor.
You made the comment too to someone that they hadn't got fuel done. How'd you know that?
I never said that.
Yes, you did.
Who did I say it to?
Well, I'm not giving names.
Exactly, exactly.
No, I'm not giving names.
I can bring a monitor.
If you ever looked at that thing, you should know.
No, there is no monitor.
Look at it, the monitor is like a thumb drive. You take off, you put it in your computer. All right, you're ready.
You plug that into TV now.
You can take it out right now, plug it in your computer and look at it.
Yeah, is it just like an SD card then?
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
Well, that cable, they got, um, ACMI hooked up in and out, and you plug it into that computer now.
That's a bug bucket. We got kids in there.
Wasn't it a little strange to have the county sheriff to come down here and help the guy install them?
I wanted to...
The sheriff here. The county sheriff to come down to help to install it.
In case somebody got irate, town member, anybody come in that didn't want them put in, to know that we had it all, it was all properly done.
I think I would have done the same thing.
I, did you ever leave this vehicle?
After hearing all this, I think I would have done the same thing.
This county's got a lot of money. They're able to run around and do what they want to do. Now, I understand too that the people that put this monitor system in, I understand that they sent a rebate check back.
I showed that to you.
Yes, I don't know what you did, but did it get put back in the coffer?
No, it did not.
I think that's against the law.
Because what he's...
It's against the law.
He sent a check, seventy-four, the little black box there, the battery back there.
Two minutes.
He did not, or he didn't come in. Michael Wayne went to Walmart. He told, they had one. He went to Walmart and picked it up. I paid Michael the, I paid Michael for the, for the battery backup. And right there's a receipt. It's thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five...
I seen it. I know it's there, but what I'm saying is, the money should have went back in the coffer until we turn around and buy that, we should have had another board meeting to buy that new monitor.
I will donate the fifty bucks for that battery backup.
So it's still was done properly.
Sure is loved, done it properly.
I'm sure there is. I'm sure there is, but if you people come to the board meetings and everything to see what goes on, you could find out.
Well, that's where we're going.
I'm talking about every, every. I couldn't hear every.
That's what we're trying.
That's good. I get the warnings from every second Wednesday of the month. My lodge is important, but we do a lot for this community. For several counties in the whole.
Is there anything else anybody wants to bring up, talk about? Is there anything else anybody wants to bring up, talk about during this meeting?
Mr. Moderator, do we need a motion on the camera towards the individual's house?
I would say probably so, because it does need to be turned.
Can I make that motion, please?
I was under the understanding you couldn't make a motion unless it was on the agenda.
I mean, you can have, notice it, you can have...
We break the laws this way, we break the laws that way.
You can have it noted on a minute.
I was told you couldn't make a motion to do anything unless it was on the agenda. Now, the way I understand it, it's not on the agenda.
We heard that.
You can have it noted in the minutes. That the board has that camera turned off the neighbor's property. So it is on the neighbor's property.
If you have to check it off.
The least that you and him do, that you go put that, I will say.
I don't remember how far, and I just know that one hour was...
This was that way, that one is...
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure some of it. It ought to be checked on before it's...
Hey, Jay, are the cameras to where you guys can move them, or does the company have to come in to adjust them? Where that's gonna be another fee?
I'd have him to adjust them, but that way I don't void the warranty, or we don't void the warranty.
I didn't know that way if it was gonna be another fee to have them.
He told me that if he had to tweak them, he, he does a lot of business in there, that he could swing by and whatever we need to do, if we needed one adjusted or whatever, slipped or need to get it turned off or something, that wouldn't be no problem.
Well, I make the suggestion that in your minutes, if you take it up tomorrow night, that you contact the guy to put these cameras in, have him come out, look at them, see how they're setting. So you bring it up to your, at your meeting tomorrow night, put this in your notes tonight, your meeting minutes tonight. It should be brought up. Yeah.
I think.
You've got two gators stolen.
John Deere. One of them, yeah, one of them was a, a twenty-five thousand dollar one. It's got air, full cab. They knocked out a boy though, didn't they? Of course, Charleston, where he was hiding out.
Oh, really?
Stole a trailer at Bowlin's. Yeah, he was... To haul the gators in. Then they stole the ramps off a job during the local gators. Stuck it somewhere between somewhere and the river, it said. So he sounded like a dandy.
I gotta say, that's forty-five, five hundred days.
Every county is cutless, and then, and they're crazy.
Getting stolen cars. I do, but not, oh, is that I?
My local pickup truck. My local pickup truck.
If you're stealing, that's a nice name. You're gonna steal stuff, go over the fence.
Exactly.
You're gonna go jail, don't be stealing one of them.
It said, humble and the river.
Yeah, that would be a thief's idea. I mean, that's, I'm gonna stop, I have to borrow it first.
They said at some point, humble and the river. They said that's where...
All right, if there's anything else, please bring it up. Brought up to see me for a hangover meeting. I heard somebody saying something about, hey, by the looks of the wages on that, it looks like Michael Roby's probably the guy that's here the most. At ten bucks an hour, he's not getting overpaid.
I gotta say, where are you gonna find somebody else to do it for that?
That's, that's not bad at all. I see Mike Lee and Weston's Eleven, both them guys know their way around equipment, and they probably deserve the extra dollar just for their molotov repair and stuff. Between working on it, welding, and stuff like that. I don't think there's any real big deal about the expenditures on the labor part of it for the entire year. That's not too bad. So does anybody else want to bring anything up, or does somebody want to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Six.
All in favor of adjourned, raise your right hand. I go thank the vote. All opposed?
You're opposed?
Okay, motion is carried. This meeting is adjourned.